We're going to call a meeting, and we'll have a floor tonight. Certainly. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and several guests. And we appreciate you being here. So what we'll do is one of our pledge allegiance. Now, we'll lead us in that, and then Mr. Neil Seven's going to have our indication. So let's do our good things.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your honor, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for the day. Lord, we thank you for the beautiful sunshine that you've given to us. Lord, we just thank you for all that you do. And pray that you put your hand about each of our council members and mayor, keep them safe. Lord, help them to always look to you for the decisions that need to be made. And, Lord, today, we especially pray for our friends and family at Hamilton and Freewill Baptist Church, and Brother Tommy Franks. We just pray that you'll put your hand about them, give them strength and comfort that can only come from you. Lord, we know that you'll meet each and every need that they have. Lord, we thank you for the stand that they take, and we thank you for who they are. And we know, Lord, that no matter what may happen, that you'll get honor and glory through everything. And again, we thank you for all that you do, and thank you for dying on the cross for our sins. In Jesus' name we pray. First time on the agenda is recognition of three events, and I'll ask me four, four sixteen. Would there be a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
We have with us tonight Mr. Bill Buck. He's an interim hospital administrator, and he wanted to come and meet with us and speak. Just let the public meet him, let us meet him. So Buck, I'm just going to turn it over to you, let you have the floor. If you can.
I would like to take an opportunity there to reintroduce myself. I am Bill Buck. I'm the interim administrator for Marion, for Mississippi Health System here in Hamilton. Then we have one of our board members with us tonight, Mr. Bob Wallace. And we also have Director Mark, who owns the Mississippi Health System, Marshall Tapp. What we wanted to do tonight is just kind of give you a brief update on Marshall. And we have our normal amount of information. We wanted to share some information with you regarding what we're doing and how we're doing. And the sheet that Marshall's handing out is just basically a summary of kind of where we're at today and what we're doing. We wanted to bring special attention to some of the conversations that we had going around town regarding the performance of the hospital. But also, a little bit of information about the Medicaid issues based in Alabama, as well as the Blue Cross Blue Shield issues that we're talking about. About three weeks, four weeks ago, the hospital was notified that we would be becoming a Tier Two hospital within the greater context of our Blue Cross Blue Shield contract. Basically, what that means is, from a Blue Cross Blue Shield perspective, they consider us to be a high-cost provider. We're really not a high-cost provider, as you can see through the financial performance. Last year, we lost a little over a million dollars. And this year, we're making a profit year-to-date. That, of course, is a fluid type situation. But when they refer to the hospital as high-cost or inefficient provider, what they're referring to is a comparison between their contracted rates with us, and the provider, our local provider, and what Medicare allows them to do. So it's really their cost, what they're paying to the hospital. And we've been doing some homework, trying to find which plans are affected. And right now, we believe that the self-funded plans are exempted from the tiering activity. Self-funded plans of Blue Cross Blue Shield, Advantage Plan, and Medicare Plan is not included in the tiering. It's important to us to recognize that impact on the hospital, because as you can see down below, you've got a little pie chart that indicates whether Blue Cross Blue Shield is on the left-hand side. And we're still struggling with trying to find out which other plans are involved in the tiering. You have Blue Cross Blue Shield Arkansas, and we Blue Cross Blue Shield Illinois, that have company business here, and they're having two different Blue Cross Blue Shield classes. And we just need to take it one at a time. It's kind of a plan-by-plan approach from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we've been in conversation with Blue Cross Blue Shield, as well as our managed care program from North Mississippi. We're just trying to make sure that the right information is out there. Most of our business is through the self-funded programs here in town. But we were talking to some of the other businesses, and they're also self-funded, and some of your large inquiries. So we just want to make sure that you've had an opportunity to ask questions. If you have any regard in that situation. Alabama Medicaid is also an issue that we're paying attention to right now because of the underfunding of that eight-point million dollar. We all understand the need to make physical improvements, but some of the cuts that they're talking about to the program could have some consequences for the local hospitals. We're trying to maintain and control the informational flow there. We do have one really nice piece of information to share with you tonight. Saturday, there will be a meeting with Dr. Martin, and Dr. Martin has signed his contract to return full-time to Hamilton. And we're extremely happy about that. We've got a couple of other recruits that we're working with. One is Carrie Ursman, and we're trying to get her through the contractual process and see if we can get her to come back. She's a third-year resident, and currently Tuscaloosa is now meeting with her tonight. I think the hospital is doing well. I think we have a great group of individual managers, which has several of our managers here tonight. Because it is a, I think, a very, very crowded, what they've accomplished over the last thirty-five years. There's been a struggle in certain areas, but I think the hospital is turning forward, looking down and forward. It's kind of focused on what was supposed to be done. Do you have any questions? We're doing okay. We use InCare, which is a national staffing company that supports several of the hospitals within the North Mississippi system. But we do have one of our own employees, Gina Miller, who's there three days. We also have inside the clinic, while we're talking with staff. We have two doctors there right now. They're what we call locum physicians, Dr. Gordon and Dr. Sparks. They're kind of rotating the beach, but in order to maintain the coverage in the clinic, both of those individuals are there three to four days. And Dr. Sparks and Dr. Gordon rotate some weekends, forced to provide coverage in our clinics. And the clinic has grown quite a bit over the last two years. The after-hours, especially. Last month, we suffered over twenty people in the after-hours clinic, which was from five o'clock to seven o'clock, we call it, seven o'clock.
And then it gets its move from the other building to the hospitals? Pardon? It's moved from the other building to the hospitals? Is that a percent increase in dangers?
Well, when we moved into the hospital, the after-hours clinic was created. I think before, it was pretty much a empty office. But we have seen some growth in there, definitely providing a lower-cost alternative to the work experience. It makes a proposition for the clinic.
How many beds are available now?
Currently, we have fifteen open. It's sometimes a staffing issue, but we have thirty-six in the hospital, licensed thirty-six. We have seventy-nine in our schedule. But right now, last week, we had several days. We were running sixteen, and I think one day we have seventeen. Trying to pick up, we need to get the positions in place so we can throw that business. We're looking, trying to look it up, and we've got at least twenty-two by now. Any other questions? I just wanted to share the information and let you know how we're doing. And if anybody had any questions about Blue Cross Blue Shield, or Alabama Medicaid, or performance of the hospital, we would welcome the input.
Well, I appreciate you coming. You're not home a couple of weeks ago, and you really liked Hamilton. I said, why don't you just move here? But I know you might be here just for a while in transition, but you were really bragging on the people here, and the staff, and doctors. You said a lot of good things about everybody in our hospital, so I wanted to let people know what you thought of this is.
The bottom of the page, there's several resources out in the energy that you can pick up. There are comparative websites out there, and we're seeing this in the state of Alabama. And you can pick up these comparative data. And I think you should be very proud of the level of quality of the organization here. You've got a great relationship with North Mississippi Health Systems. And I think that's a huge benefit to the organization, as well as to the region. They're able to bring in services and resources to apply, help us with our quality process, help us with looking at issues as they come up, new developments, and access to a lot of different factors.
I appreciate you.
Bobby, would you like to say anything?
I think you've covered it.
Any comments, perhaps? Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. This is called promoter talk. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We know how much our hospital needs to start to be vital to Hamilton. We're just very fortunate to have a hospital here, and as well as it's doing. So we're very much supportive, knowing that you did, and wishing you the best. The next item on the agenda is recognition to adopt a resolution declaring the monthly table as Fair Housing Month. This is required by the state, being one who receives city visiting grants. I think you got a copy of that, and that there. It's just a simple resolution, since we do receive grants on some of this. And we have to do it for the form. You can see if there will be a motion to approve this Fair Housing Month resolution. No motion. Francis. All the favors you have. Number four, I put back on the agenda, the recognition of purchase of software system for the city cemetery, C I M S. NICO did look at providing this service to the city, but agreed that this was all that was available and what they could, able to provide. And the reason is, they just can't go in as much detail as this computer system can. They basically can do the mapping, which is pretty good, but it's not, it's not enough. What this company will do is much, much more. We can get up to date, get efficient. I put back on there, get approval. Hugh or Tina, y'all can add anything to us that might help us one way or another. Y'all looked at it, we've looked at it. With Angela, we had a phone conference, and saw the systems, how it worked. And I do believe it's the best course to move this, this program. Yes, I believe it. Can you answer that question?
Would you kept here asking?
Yeah. I know it'll be on Angela's computer, but they're also. But it'll be with y'all also.
Yeah. At least into the information, though. Once information's put in there, I'm saying, why, you know, it might be a, just being Angela's.
And we talked to her about that, and we looked at the program.
How long is this for? Does it say?
This is the program that then it does have a year of maintenance with.
Is this that one time?
Just one time.
Okay. What they.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to purchase.
Okay. I'll say it. Any other discussion? All the favors, yeah. Thank you, and thank y'all for giving this. I do want to say thank you to Hugh and his family for, they've looked over this for several years. It takes a lot of work. You know, they take a lot off of us in the office. When something happens, somebody needs to be buried, we don't know. We don't have them heaven's, we just don't have the access. They kept, kept the records, and this is going to get us a lot further ahead than we are, and also help them too. I appreciate you doing that. Number five I have on here, Lynn and I talked about this last week. Lynn, I'll let you explain if you will. Discuss the Haven Airport Road, and if you would, Lynn, if you don't care, I'll just let you kind of explain.
The county got a partially in D grant, and it's fifteen thousand. The total cost of the project is going to be somewhere around forty to forty-five. And county wants to know if we'll go in hack, what's left after the fifteen. And that's going to pay for the pavement and the striping, any of the shoulder work or whatever is going to be done to it. The county's going to take care of that.
So really, the county's seeing that?
Yeah, and it's going to start out at Main Highway there at the car lot. Then it runs back to that intersection, and then it'll turn to the right and go up to the airport.
Okay. So it does turn and go about another quarter mile or so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a good idea, and it helps us work together and still get a new paved road out of it. And it's not, you know, we're all helping each other. So council's okay with it. I'd ask a motion to do that, if that's reasonable, but I want to lay it kind of this way.
So it's about over fifteen thousand?
Yeah, it was like, it should be somewhere around thirty thousand.
So it would be about fifteen each?
About fifteen, yeah.
I make a question, would we accept this proposal to share over fifteen thousand?
I'll say it.
Is there any other discussion? All the favors, yeah. State. Yeah, I believe in states. Got a couple announcements here. One is, this coming Saturday is cleanup day for Hamilton. It's scheduled for April twenty-third. Volunteers at the Hamilton United Methodist Church, they meet at seven o'clock. Now have breakfast Friday with the Lions Club, we'll feed, and the Lions Club will feed everyone. All laundry is ready before they break up into groups. But what they do is they break into groups and have certain areas of town, they go and clean up. They'll provide garbage bags and safety bags, and you'll bring your own gloves or something. But it's usually a pretty good, pretty good day, pretty good turnout, so I'm going to make that announcement. Also, the veteran outreach program will be coming to Hamilton on May the nineteenth. And it'll be set up from the Marion Regional Medical Center from ten a.m. to two p.m. The coverage will be for anyone who has served in the military, retired, or active. And we'll have town to announce that again, and it's on May the nineteenth. And I think I have one more here. The Hamilton Place Senior Living also is inviting local public servants, officials, including firefighters, police, EMTs, less officials. It's also includes teachers, librarians, sanitation workers, and makers crew. Two Country Place Senior Living, those April twenty-ninth and twelfth, and this is a good outreach. They wanted to show the appreciation for all those that serve, and serve our citizens. So I just want to make that announcement to those that this program includes. And I also want to thank the fire department last night. Lynn went to the fire, to the Hamilton and Freewill Baptist Church. They're now standing in job. Volunteers, fire departments from all over came and helped. We really appreciate that, and they did a outstanding job, so. At least for all those that came, stayed up most of the night, most of the volunteers. When something major happens, we know we've got help, and I really appreciate them doing that. I know the folks at the church did, and I think they had a prayer service today at five o'clock. So our thoughts and prayers, they were charming, what caused it. But the end result is, I have to rebuild. I'm sure they will do that as soon as possible. That's really all I have tonight, unless I was by something else. If not, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Sir, may I ask you?
Yes.
When I first came to Hamilton, which was now eleven years ago, didn't have to have glasses. I had glasses. I appreciate Mr. Buck coming, and I appreciate the courtesy of giving him as long to speak as he likes. And I hope that I can get the same courtesy, but I won't be that long. My name is Mark and Pacey. I own American Heritage Hospitality Corporation, namely in Hamilton, the Key West End, where we do our best to provide clean rooms and competitive rates. Among my monthly tax bill, fifteen thousand dollars concerning Key West End in Hamilton, I pay, on average, about three thousand dollars a month to the city of Hamilton. And I appreciate the opportunity to address the city and to address the city council and the mayor. And I would like to address the new hotel in town. To begin with, I'd like to state that I'm in favor of bringing a new hotel to town. I agree with many of the arguments that I've heard concerning the project. I'd like to say that most of my knowledge comes from the journal record. Over the last eleven years, I've come to love Hamilton. Hamilton's now my hometown after eleven years. Like any new relationship, I've gone through an adjustment period, and I have adjusted. And now a Hamiltonian, I guess you could say. And it's a different pace from what a lot of people are used to. You go to Walmart, you see the same thing, as opposed to never seeing a soul that you know. And it takes some getting used to. Plus, you hear all of your business, and some business that you didn't even know existed, you hear that about yourself. So you have to, you know, adjust to the small town. But I'd like to just talk about the meeting that I'm going to refer to as the semi-announced meeting. I've talked around and asked, you know, how the meeting was announced. And at best, I can get that it was semi-announced. It was announced that there was a meeting, but not specific. If I had known, I would have agreed. But again, I get all of my information about this from the journal record. And I seriously thank Ed Howe for exceptionally good job he did on that article. I know what it's like, I've done that job, and it serves to the community. Since I was not invited to the meeting concerning the new hotel, I'd like to address the issue after the fact. I know it's a done deal, but I'd still like to make a few points here. And maybe it was just an oversight that nobody in the lodging industry was invited to this meeting. But I really believe that they should have. And again, back to the journal record, there is a group that meets of Marion County hotel owners and managers. It's also in the journal record. And although the announcement of hotel meeting may not have been procedurally defective, it certainly was not widely and reasonably advertised for a meeting of this magnitude and this expenditure. Understandably, there is a perceived air that there was a rush to hurry up and book. That's the feeling I get. You don't agree with that, Ms. Mike? You don't agree with that, Mayor? You agree with that, Ms. Williams? No comment?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I'm rubbing a bad wound here. That's the, I read the paper. I didn't, I didn't read it with funny glasses, I just read it. Anyway, we can all speculate, and I guess I've answered my question here, what was the rush? Some say there wasn't a rush. Seems like there was a rush. If it was better advertised, maybe there might have been some unwelcome reason contributing to the discussion. And again, Marion County hoteliers were not contacted, even though they meet as a group. You know what? In the past, they used to teach Robert's Rules of Order. And I'd be real interested in seeing the biologies of the city of Hamilton. I assume that there are biologies. If I could get a copy out, I'd appreciate that very much. But again, I personally sincerely welcome a new hotel to the area, which I will come to later. I'm sure I don't speak for the other hotels when I say that I welcome another hotel in the area. One of the hotels, I've got hunches from watching their business, that they have some degree of problems. It's been indicated to me that neither the Hampton Inn in Winfield nor the Holiday Inn are performing as desired. Although I have personally seen their books, I just watch their rates like a hawk. They watch my rates like a hawk. I watch their traffic, they watch my traffic. I don't go to their businesses, but I go to Birmingham, and I, you know, the owned business, look across the way. It's obvious at this point that there's some type of a Marion County hotel competition. I think that was even began to the paper reference. Some could even call it a hasty race. According to the journal record, Mayor Williams and Jim Eckelberger, Action Property, said a sixty-five-room hotel like the Hampton, at eighty-five percent occupancy, would generate four point five million dollars a year. By my calculator, sixty-five rooms times sixty-five days a year is twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five rooms available per year. At eighty-five percent occupancy, that's twenty thousand one hundred and sixty-six rooms. To generate four point five million dollars, that's two hundred and twenty-three dollars average daily rate. I can't see that happening. Maybe the paper was wrong, I don't think so. The Hampton Inn, which has been used as a comparative, has an average day-to-day rate of about a hundred and fifteen dollars. The Holiday Inn has an average day-to-day rate of about eighty dollars. And by the way, that ultra-low eighty-dollar hotel rate per night for a five-million-dollar property is an indicator to me as to what's going on internally. And if anybody who's not in that industry would look at those numbers, they would say the same thing, now that I've pointed it out. An average day-to-day rate of two hundred and twenty-three dollars, ADR we call it, or more reasonable expectation, an average day-to-day rate of around a hundred and ten dollars per room night. I guess they'd have to charge another hundred and fifteen dollars a night for parking. I don't think that's going to happen. But they would have to do that to get to this four point five billion-dollar annual number that is considered as part of the formula. But again, that's just me. After I read the newspaper this weekend, I sent out emails to the guys I know in the industry, which nobody else seemed to bother to have done before this focus statement. I guess I'm the only one who cares. I called around. My first call was to a close friend of mine. He probably wouldn't mind if I used his name, although I didn't ask him. But I won't use it publicly anyway. But I told him I wanted to talk about this deal that Hamilton had made. This gentleman has been in this business since I was ten years old. He is the guru. For fifteen years, he's CEO of one of the primary hotel franchises in the country. Everyone in this room has stayed in a room that was under his care. I could tell him anytime, talk about anything. How's the grandpa? I told him that Hamilton will don't. I told him that Hamilton will donate to this whole profit company. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in land. Another hundred thousand dollars. That's a total of one point one five million dollars to build a five million dollar hotel. He was beside himself. He was in disbelief. He was in shock. I can't publicly tell you the extreme degree of his comments. Couldn't believe it. This is the worst deal ever known to a rural community that took place last Monday in Hamilton, Alabama. The worst deal ever. Right there. Happened right here. I'm sure that if it had been bid competitively, you would have saved a quarter to three millions of dollars, three quarters of a million dollars. Hey, if you've got it, spend it. As in the newspaper, you got it, spend it. We bid for police cars. We stretched our budget, but in this case, we accepted the asking price. Plus, as I understand it, a last million, a last minute hundred thousand dollar increase was demanded. Yay, don't.
Correct.
Okay. Excuse me. About that last hundred thousand. It did go up a hundred thousand.
It was always, it was always eight hundred. Mark, all you had to do is come see him. Take him forward, come into the meeting.
I would rather discuss it publicly.
You can.
I would not allow me to finish, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I appreciate you. Usually what people do is come see me first.
Usually people contact the industry and ask their opinion. Usually people say, hey, there's going to be a hotel, we're going to spend one point one five million dollars on, that we're going to donate. But the usual didn't seem to happen in this case.
I'm not going to argue.
Apparently not. I wouldn't either.
Don't argue.
It's a losing battle with you. And if I may continue, you let, you told Mr. Buck he could talk as long as he wanted to. Can I get the same? And I live here.
Yes, sir.
I'm not, I'm not stopping. Let me know when you're finished with your comments and I'll continue.
Go ahead.
If you asked me, a local guy, I would have saved you at least a quarter million dollars and would have danced for joy with the deal that I struck with the city. We're talking about big name, Hampton scale hotels I would have put in here. Absolutely. If Hamilton was looking to be on the map, you've been successful. Word is now among the hotel industry that Hamilton, Alabama is ready to do business. Just name your price. Hamilton, Alabama makes the worst hotel deals ever known to man. I've come to realize that this competition with Winfield, it's silly, it's childish, it's unprofessional, it's counterproductive. I see Winfield, Alabama as a nice community, not a do or die rival. There are good people over in Winfield. And everywhere I go, I hear people putting down Winfield. I don't hear that in Winfield. If this humiliating waste of taxpayer dollars is not enough, that's for Four Choice or whatever brand offers their incentives. Incentives are going to come from the franchise. According to my guru source, the lucrative incentives will also be coming from the franchise. We bring in high dollar consultants about the best way to tear down an old building, but we fail to ask anyone's opinion, except for the people we're giving the money to, before willy-nilly scattering hunting around. We talked about the Hamilton deal. As we talked about the Hamilton deal, my pal and I, I learned more about the hotel franchise than he knew as an insider from the other side. Of course, the selected franchise will return a very favorable feasibility report. They have nothing to lose and they gain a property and they offer. In the worst case scenario, should the hotel default, default using Hamilton's money, the bank will continue the franchise agreement with the same franchise it chose, as the hotel goes through receivership. The bank would need a flag. The bank would require a flag. And there would already be one flag. So why change franchises? The franchise has a win-win, win-win situation. Changing the flag would just be more money torn away and in this unlikely case that default, a new hotel would be sold under cost at the expense of families of Hamilton as a distressed property. Probably the sale would go to the people who are most familiar with the property, the franchise again. Win-win, win-win. Franchise has nothing to lose, everything to gain. Putting this fox in charge of the in-house also always results in chickensick. Don't fool yourself. The feasibility study is a boilerplate, fill in the blank, consider it done, favorable at either exit seven, exit favorable, about exit fourteen, or just danger exit. It's come, got for it, guaranteed. I stated that I'm one hundred percent for the new hotel coming to Hamilton, especially one that I could offer its guests a clean room as an alternative at a better rate. And I'll be able to do that. It's going to work for me. But now I've got to compete with a hotel that the city gave the money to. In this unheard of, what they're going to have is a no money down, just like Carlton Sheets used to say on TV years ago. Here's how to do it, no money down. They found the city of Hamilton and got a no money down deal, I'm sure. Twenty percent came from the city of Hamilton. I've got to compete with a property that owners have absolutely no skin in the game. And I live here. I'm not from Yazoo. Actually, I am, but I live here now. And I didn't even get an invitation to the celebration party when Hamilton signed the deal. I was once secretary treasurer of a nonprofit organization. In thirteen years, I increased the coffers forty-two hundred percent. One of the first things that I learned as a leader of an organization was not only do you not do anything wrong, you don't do anything that makes it look like you might have done something wrong. I want to badmouth the guys from Yazoo. I'm also from the Mississippi Delta just near Yazoo. Just helps. These guys are smart. These guys are sharp businessmen. How else could you get a deal like this? Taxpayer money, a lot of taxpayer money, Hamilton taxpayer money, to build a hotel. No money necessary. These guys from Yazoo, these guys from the Delta are smart. There's an expression over in Mississippi, we don't send our boys to the Mississippi universities to be students. There are just under eighteen hundred families in Hamilton. I suspect if you went door to door to each family and said, we need seven hundred dollars from each family in Hamilton so that these guys from Yazoo can build a hotel and make millions of dollars with your money, I suspect that our answer would be no, or probably much worse. Folks, this was a bad deal. There may be front, eight front desk jobs come out of this, maybe four house crews. What's in it for us? Well, at two hundred and twenty-three dollars a night, none of us can stay there. We know the figures are flawed, so we know that the tax information must be flawed as well. Out of the whole city of Hamilton, I seem to be the only person who bothered to pull out a calculator before we promised these guys one point one five million dollars to build a hotel. I hope that you guys maybe get a great travel trip to one of the properties to see what's going on, learn about it. Maybe an exotic sentinel, maybe, maybe we'll have that. Hamilton has the makings of a great city. A city with jobs, a city with culture, a city with activities to keep the kids away from the meth. I love Hamilton. I am now a Hamiltonian. There's a lot of potential here and there's a lot of potential for the kids. But they're laughing at us now. We just make bad deals. If you'll invite me to the next hotel party, I can do the deal for high price. I'll be happy. We're talking about a lot of zeros I can save you. It's not even, believe it or not, it's not even a difficult thing to do when you've got that kind of money. I'd love to see Hamilton recover from this, but we can't keep doing this kind of stuff. Give anybody in Hamilton this deal and I'll show you Hamilton's next millionaire. I don't care if he's flat broke right now. In this deal, there are payments totaling three hundred thousand dollars after the feasibility study is done. The feasibility study determines whether or not it's a good idea for these guys to build a hotel here and where's the best spot. Is it feasible to build a five point five million dollar hotel using one point one million dollars of Hamilton taxpayer money? Answer is yes. That's feasible. Anybody can do it. I don't need a feasibility study to answer that. And I won't quote how the feasibility study has been referred to amongst my industry friends. Last time I checked, University of Alabama, Alabama Real Estate Research and Education Center, University of Alabama, will do this study for about twenty thousand dollars. They do a good study. They do good work. If you don't do your homework, you make bad deals. If you're spending someone else's dollar, you make bad deals. There's no doubt that Choice Hotels, if it is Choice, will come back from this feasibility study clear, go ahead. I don't like it. I don't like the way the Hamilton citizens' money was spent. I don't like that I contribute three thousand dollars a month to that fund. I don't like it that I've approached the mayor and asked him to reduce that seven percent tax that my customers are having to pay on top of the ten, on top of the five percent tax, state tax, when five percent is enough for the state, but seven's got to be enough for the city. And we're not in New York City. Twelve percent tax on a hotel room in Hamilton, Alabama. Fell on deaf ears. Well, I guess we need that money if we're going to be throwing it around and we're going to be buying people from Yazoo hotels. There's a contingency that this company must execute a contract with an appropriate company, so they will have to pay back the three hundred thousand dollars of the money. With a one point five million dollar, one point one five million dollar donation from the city of Hamilton, they will execute a contract with an appropriate company. If you want to win the Marion County hotel rates, whether it's for personal ego or whatever, we can win it. But making knee-jerk, bad deals is not the way. There's a thing known as competitive bidding. This was not it. I would have loved to have been an insider on this deal. But let's send that money over to Yazoo. Are you down? Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your time very much. Well, thank you.